Good evening to the Brookfield Selectmen's Meeting of September 10th, 2019. Would you like to rise and join me in saluting?
No, go over there again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to entertain a motion to approve the following warrants. A payroll warrant for 8/28/19 for $154,633.63. A payroll warrant for 7/19/19 for $1,409.94. A payroll warrant for 9/4/19 for $3,064.80. Another-
It's a minus, it's a negative.
Oh, it's a negative, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. And now we have another payroll warrant for 9/4/19 for $3,786.60. A payroll warrant from 9/11/19 for $176,571.80. An expense warrant for 9/10/19 for $476.22. An expense warrant for 9/10/19 for $201,121.71.
You have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I have some minutes of department reports to- I would like approval for those.
So, motion to accept the Selectmen's amendments and approve the reports.
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then we have fire department reports from July and August for 2019. And EMS, EMS for August 2019.
Motion to approve.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, and on the one from the fire department, we have anniversaries. Maybe Peter can help me with the last name here for the firefighter, Raymond Ranelo.
Ranelo. Ranalone.
Ranalone. He's, uh, his anniversary was 7/20, he's been with us for 20 years. Congratulations to him.
Awesome.
And then we also have another anniversary with Jeff White, who's a lieutenant, for 8/30, for 15 years of service. I'd like to congratulate the both of them and hope that they stay with us for many more years.
Yes.
Is an EMS one too, I think it is an EMS.
Is there an EMS? Firefighter? No, I don't think so, Karen, it was just these. Nope, just those two. Firefighter. Oh, another, another paramedic, I'm sorry, paramedic Ashley Marks for 8/21. And she was here with us for seven years, I'd like to congratulate her too for her volunteer.
That's great.
Oh, okay. Now, our next thing on our agenda is we have a fire department grant award. And if Peter would probably like to come up and speak on that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, as a practice, we received a phone call on Thursday from somebody from Senator Marky's office, just giving us a heads up about it. And then on Friday, we were officially notified that from the last grant cycle through Department of Homeland Security, through FEMA program called the Assistance for Firefighter Grants, AFGs, that one of the grants that we had submitted the last calendar year had been approved. This program has been going on almost 20 years, I believe, and this is our third such grant. We got one for a communications overhaul many years ago, and one for a thermal imager. This is the largest. The amount that we'll be getting from the federal government won't exceed $133,561.90. The total project is $140,240. They require, based on the size of our community, a 5% match, which comes up to $6,678.10. Internally, being this early in the fiscal year, and considering that this will take care of some things I would've had to do otherwise, some testing, some replacement. My plan is to deal with that reimbursement in budget right now. And if something falls short, we've still got a lot of fiscal 20 to go. There's no point in, you know, rating other accounts, anything, not stabilization or reserve or anything of that in point at this time.
Yeah, you think you can handle it with your operational budget?
If we can absorb it now, if there's something short, we'll deal with it. We'll jump off that bridge and get to it.
Did we set aside at the annual some money that overlaps with this that could also be used?
There was money set aside for protective clothing and air bottle replacement. So by doing this, we won't have to replace air bottles because we're getting brand-new air bottles.
Understood, but would it make sense to fund a portion of your $6,600 from that, from that money? If you're concerned it would cause you a budgetary shortfall?
I could look at the number, just to not run afoul of the language and the will of the people. I could see how many bottles we would've had to replace in fiscal 20. And I could take that number and I think with the county's permission, yeah, I don't, I don't really see it as an issue. We're replacing air bottles, we're just doing it for five cents on the dollar, so.
Exactly, well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, so I think why it would be important-
I think that might be an opportunity.
It does follow the scope of it, but not as specific as the will of it. The way it was written and what was approved, because I do spell it out, this will allow us to buy 18 self-contained breathing apparatus, air packs. And the, the federal government defines air pack as the backpack, the regulator, the hoses, et cetera. A bottle, a spare bottle, air tank, so a total of 36 air tanks, and a mask, the face mask, breathing apparatus, with what they call a voice amplifier, when you're talking with this over there. So this actually allows you to speak more normally into a radio. In addition, the industry standard now is to issue individual masks to people, so they have their own mask that they take care of. The 18 that will come with the packs will stay on the trucks, just in case something happens, we have those. But we'll be getting 20 additional masks to equip 20 firefighters with their individual mask, and those also have voice amplifiers. And the federal government actually specifies that, okay, your air pack with two bottles shouldn't exceed $7,000 per item. They've got it all budgeted out based on the request. They looked at our num, the numbers that were submitted for the items, not so much the cost. They look at market and area of country and as to what they can do. It used to be that you either got all or none. Now they say, well, this is what you asked for in terms of equipment and money. We'll give you the equipment, but you can do better on money. Both these items are covered in understate competitive bid listings. So we're going to be evaluating in the next couple of weeks with vendors, just due diligence. It's going to be mostly the rank and file. I don't wear them, so I really don't have the, I don't want to say the right to make the final, I'll make the final decision, but not every decision about it. The firefighters and the officers themselves will evaluate them. We haven't bought a new air pack in several years and many, and that was part of the, the way the program works. Their packs are regulated by the National Fire Protection Association, gets together every three years and sets and updates standards for this equipment. And you receive points in your favor depending on how old the packs were. And the goal of the federal government with this grant the last few years is to replace all air packs. There were more than two cycles out of compliance. Well, we had some packs that were four cycles out of compliance. And those are questions very pointed in the application, so. So it was written, a lot of it, the information, they look at call volume, they look at the entire perspective of the, of the department, the fleet, everything, types of calls we've done over the last three years. I wrote it up, I had a couple of my members review it internally. The coordinator, retired fire chief by the name of David Parr, who works for the FEMA, said, "Have somebody else read it. If you're an author, you don't usually see your own mistakes." So my guys were able to look at it, look at a couple of things. Kathy LaRocca read it, she was very blunt right off the start, she says, "I don't know anything about air packs. But if I'm spelling something wrong the entire time, you know, if it's there, there, or there, then it's going to look kind of silly." So, no, Kathy was very good. We've been optimistic every, every time I've seen Kathy in the last few months, you heard, you heard, you heard, so.
Yeah, just the fact you hadn't heard was probably good because it meant that they hadn't said no yet, so.
I had talked to Kathy today about it, and she complimented you. She said, "You did most of the work on it." Because she says, "Peter's been doing this for so many years," she says, "I really didn't do anything on it."
But it was important, and I liked having, because they even encouraged, the coordinator, Chief Parr, he said, "What he wrote grants, his proofreader was his wife, who knew nothing about the fire service on the, she was married to a fire chief. But she would find, you know, you're, I know what you're trying to say, but you're not saying it." That was the type of thing. And Kathy caught a couple of those with me, and, you know, I've been accused since, I think, third grade of run-on sentences. So between her and my guys, we caught that, so.
So congratulations.
Thank you, Peter.
Good teamwork.
So we should, the award and everything, I can keep this up to speed. It's going to be a couple of weeks, but I'd say by the time the leaves are down, this will be well underway, so.
Great, excellent.
That's great.
Have your time.
Thank you, Peter.
Our next one is to sign an OBRa contribution plan changes. They, this is some, if people don't work 20 hours a week, they get involved with this OBRa. And what it is, it's some interest changes on it.
Motion to sign.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to answer the question?
I was going to second for, for a little bit of discussion. So with the OBRa, is there any options other than the fixed type of account that they are? Or is that, is that basically the state regulation that that's the only type of interest-bearing account it can be? Do you know?
Well, I know that that is the only one, but what happened is the rate went down.
Right.
Yeah, but this is no, say, say that again.
So I was wondering, is there any way for people to select a different type of investment to place those funds?
No, no, if you work on 20 hours a week, you have to be involved with OBRa.
It's through nationwide.
Through nation, it's through nationwide. And people can also, if people even do have a retire, other retirement account, you know, like the regional retirement, if you want to have another one, you can get involved with it.
Good.
Okay, so, we do need to take the vote, though.
Yeah, take the vote.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Under the resignation, the appointment, I had one appointment, and then there was another one because Mike gave me a piece of paper and wanted to be appointed tonight.
Okay.
So, decided I wanted to do that too.
We have some appointments here. One is for Kathy LaRocca to be the ADA coordinator.
Appointed to that position.
Appointed, and this would be from June, till June 30th of 2020. I'd like to have a motion to-
Motion to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then Mike Serry would like to be appointed to the CIPC.
And that was a resignation, we'll get later on.
There was resignation.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mike Serry for June, till June 30th, 2020.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, I do have a question, actually, probably I should've asked before we took the vote. Have, do we have anybody else that's expressed an interest in it?
Well-
And, and have we, in essence, posted the vacancy before we add them on?
What happened is Mike received the resignation, and then right before I was getting ready to leave, he asked to be appointed, and I didn't have time to really reach out to you folks, so I figured I'd put it out and you guys could decide here. No, it hasn't been posted, the resignation just came in today.
So, so I'll, I would prefer that you register my vote as no, because I think it would be, what would be appropriate is to just let the community know that the vacancy exists.
I think there is probably another vacancy on that committee, isn't there, anyway?
I have no idea.
And I know they've, yeah, I think there's a vacancy anyway, so.
But I mean, it's still two to one, but I'm just saying is that I think it would be more appropriate, particularly where he's a town employee and he has knowledge of this, the, the position, and nobody else necessarily does. I think what would've been more appropriate would be to go ahead and at least let the community know that, that it's available as an opportunity, because he's our town clerk, he's on the cemetery commission, he's our parking hearing officer, he's on the board of health. Nothing stops him from being on the CIPC, but I, I just see it as being something that it would be more appropriate to see if there's anybody that would be interested in getting involved. But, you know, it's still two to one, even if I pull my vote back and say no.
Yeah.
Did you say that this was the only two? Our next one is to establish a commission on disability.
Motion to form a committee, a commission on disability.
Second, but let's talk through it and explain it.
So, so because of the grant and the ADA, ADA compliance, we need a commission that relates to the, to disabilities. And so it's, we don't have to form it and have people appointed to it, but we have to have this body create the commission so that we can in fact appoint.
Don't we have to vote it at a town meeting according to Mass General Law? That was my reading of the information that was sent to us, is that we need to put it in-
This came from Kathy.
Kathy asked me to ask the Board of Selectmen, she said, "All you have to do is, they just have to vote to establish a commission out there."
Okay.
And eligibility. She didn't say anything about town meeting, and I know she read through it.
Pretty thoroughly. I had read the email, I had read the email earlier, and I, I kind of got the impression that it would be, that, that usually it's formed by, you know, adding that, the same way like the CIPC is in by bylaw. So I think, I think what we can do is, I think we can charter and, and form a committee, but I think long-term, it's probably would be best to also add it to our bylaws, one of the standing-
Yes.
So tonight, all that Kathy is just asking us to do is to have a commission on it, that's all she wants us to do.
We, and she can follow up.
And she can, and she can follow, we'll have her follow, follow up on that.
Yeah, I just want to make certain that we-
In the email, I think there was basically something that was sort of a charter.
It, it is sort of a charter, it gave some pretty, it looked like it gave some pretty deep details about the requirements, and it did look like it referenced some form of Mass General Law that says that the town needs to adopt. And usually when a town needs to adopt, it means we have to vote.
It says right here, "Commissions consist of no less than five and no more of nine, chosen by the Board of Selectmen or town manager. The majority must be persons with disabilities, and one may be a member of the immediate family of a person with a disability. In addition, one member must be elected or appointed municipal official." And it says down here that the Board of Selectmen are to appoint a minimum of five members to serve on this board. Members are appointed to serve three-year terms, and, oh, right here also, it says something wrong. So the town of Brookfield has not created a formal commission. Commissions on disability are established by a vote of town meeting to promote the inclusion and integration of persons and disabilities in the activities, services, and employment opportunities of the community. Under Mass General Law, authority section 8J gives municipalities, municipalities the authority to establish commissions on disability.
So we say yes tonight, we go to town meeting, whatever the next town meeting is.
Yeah, and I think in the interim, we could, we could, we could form a committee with the intent to transition it to a commission if the town meeting, if that's the will of the town meeting.
So determined.
Yeah, if that's so determined. But I think, I think within our authority, we can stand up a committee for it, and we could ask that, and we could try to start staffing it with people that meet the requirements of the commission once a commission is formed.
Okay.
We need to establish it tonight.
Yeah, absolutely, so, so-
Kathy looks-
A memo.
Yeah, and we, and we could charter the committee, we just would have to put it on the, the town meeting to, to get the commission in place.
Well, and the key here is that she's looking for ADA grants, and we have to have a commission or committee to be in place to be able to apply.
Right.
So, I think we've handled it.
We're all set on that. Okay, the next one is to sign a municipal transfer.
Can you explain what happened?
Yeah, if you'd like to.
What happened is, and Steve Gillis knows this, when we go to, to our budget, Board of Selectmen's budget, the insurance is, the general insurance is in our budget. And we went to our insurance agent and asked him what we should, what figure we should use. And he allowed somewhat of an increase, not much, but he gave us a figure, an exact figure, which is what we went back to the advisory board to, which is what we received. Well, I was very surprised when I received three bills and couldn't pay the last one because there wasn't enough money, because he underestimated by about $9,500. So I called him up and spoke with him, and he said, well, he said, he didn't anticipate it, but due to all the wind damage, the hurricanes, tornadoes, et cetera, that there was a, it had nothing to do with anything in-house or anything to do with us. It was just overall, there was a hike in the insurance rates. And I had to ask him to put it in an email, so you'd have it in writing, which is attached to that.
Do you want to see it?
If you sign that, it'll go to the advisory board.
So when you say that we received three bills, do we, do we pay the full year upfront, but like in, in three installments?
Well, the general insurance we do, because it's injured on duty, and then the Trident, which is the Ardenot insurance, and then there's one more that we pay.
Okay, so it's three separate policies, we pay annually upfront, and we have a shortfall of $9,500. Got it. Okay. All right, so it's a, it's an industry uptick, and there's not a lot of options, actually, with municipal insurance, so.
So motion to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next one here is some, to sign grant amendments. This is a grant here. It was, oh, it was on the abandoned houses, and Mike had first- The demo. Mike had first gotten $2,700, and now it was increased to $4,255. So 50% of demolition of the blighted properties were already done. So I guess he's just going to take and put this in the budget for, if he has more.
We have more.
We have more. So-
Now that I know that, and when things freeze up, I know exactly where we can go spend it.
So I have a motion that I can-
Oh, yes, motion to sign.
All in favor?
Second.
Aye.
So we've got the garage on Menace Bids, let's see if that goes away, and then the race, the roller rink will be next. We'll get that place cleaned up yet?
Yeah, inch by inch.
Actually, I'll speak to Ryan about that.
Okay, and also here, we have another one to sign. This is from, from the CDBG grant, and it's the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development. Recently approved the town's request to amend its 2017 CDBG grant to add two additional activities to utilize unextended grant funds prior to the grant's closing on December 31st, 2019. And, and it said the one, and it said, "These activities include housing rehabilitation and engineering design for the future cleanup of 15 post road."
Great.
Motion to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
They talked about being able to get everything done, so that's great.
Yeah, what's good about that is that they just, they did such an efficient job executing on the core portion of the grant that, that we've got the funds to continue on.
Do something else.
Okay, now, we have another one here. This is to sign grant amendments.
CDBG invoice.
Yeah, CBGG. And this is on a Hayden and Hyde property, it's, it's an invoice for 2018 invoice.
Will be paid.
So that's just, okay, so I'd like to, a motion to sign this grant.
Motion to sign that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So just myself.
It looks like the network's moving a pace there.
Yeah, looks great.
Right now it's, right now it's tor, it'll look great when they're done.
Yeah, it's another one. Yeah, for the same thing, for the same project. So all three of us have to sign this one, and we all three have to sign this one, because this is by owner, approved by owner, town of Brookfield.
That was just the one signature? Just the one page?
Oh, it was?
Or what?
Oh, no.
Oh, no, okay, sorry.
Yeah, I need to get the other page as well.
Okay.
This one, it didn't make any sense, because usually there's a couple of places.
On this one, there's only one place to sign.
All right, so, okay, so that's the-
Maybe.
All right, so you need to sign that one.
Okay, and there's only just that one to sign, each of you there.
Mike's spending somebody else's money.
Or it's ours, come back to us, one or the other.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
And then we have a resignation here.
Actually, Kentucky spends our money.
Exactly.
We do, "I resign," he says, "to all concerned. I resign from my position on the CIPC Capital Planning Interest Committee, Commission effective immediately, Sean Mulligan."
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is this the one under other, Karen?
It's nothing under other.
Nothing under other, the either of you?
The correspondence is the triple E.
Yeah, let's talk triple E.
And then, if I could just bring up, I'm sorry, I, I know, I didn't mention announcements tonight. We'll put that under other. The Brookfield Economic Food Pantry is accepting donations at the Mayor Public Library, whenever the library is open, or at St. Mary's Church, 4 Howard Street, during distribution hours, Wednesday, 9:30 to 11:00 a.m., and Saturday, 9:30 to 11:00 a.m. Okay, so the next one here is the, okay. This, the next one is on the triple E virus update. And Michael, Mike Serry, who is on the Board of Health, wanted us to share this. Please share this update with the Board of Selectmen. The Mass Department of Public Health will not be recommending more airdoll- of Public Health will not be recommending more aerial spraying for the remainder of this year. The Board of Health did discuss making it a priority that all horses in town be vaccinated for the E E virus. However, this is not something that is supported by the Department of Public Health. And he also had a discussion with Clarence regarding the possibility of our community joining other towns for annual spraying. I did not discuss this with the Board last night, but suppose it is an option for us to explore. According to Clarence, the hot, cost would be around thirty thousand annually. And you would like to add to this?
So, so let me add to this. I will be providing about an eight-page document to the Board of Health through Mike tomorrow, because they're not here tonight, with, with a different set of information. So there will be aerial spraying. An aerial spraying will go as far as Charlton and Dudley, Lester, Auburn and the like. So there will be aerial spraying next week. We're not on the list. And one of the questions I'll be asking Mike is, were we requested or because of the, the finding in the town of triple E in a horse, that were we considered or was there any correspondence? As it relates to the mosquito control program, it's beyond spraying. It's an education, partly an education program where people are informed and not have standing water and those kinds of things, and where Brookfield has so much water and some of it standing, that we need to be really cautious and we need to be aware and we need to take action. Sad that we have a five-year-old in a hospital in critical condition with, with the effects of triple E, not, fortunately not in the town of Brookfield, but someone that's, that's affected by it. So I, what I, what I'm proposing to the Board of Health is I seriously consider bringing the mosquito control program before the, the next town, annual town meeting, where we can in fact talk about funding it. And again, I would stress that it goes beyond spraying, but at least we might be more prepared next year than we are this year. Anyway, that's my thought.
And, and the other thing is, it's not necessarily mandated, but it certainly makes a lot of sense for horse owners and we have a lot of them in town to go ahead and vaccinate their animals, right?
Right, and boost and graft and boost it. And you can boost and many did.
Yep.
So that's, that's a good thing.
And I would support anything, a hundred percent support it at the annual town meeting, because we do, we need to do something about this.
Yep, yep. Be, be at least on the front end of that.
Yep, that's a good idea. Okay, our next one is, it's a flood risk meeting by FEMA. And the time is 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon on September 26th, 2019, at the McKinnon Council Chambers, Southbridge Town Hall, 41 Elm Street, Southbridge, Mass.
Did Ryan and Cindy get a copy of that, Karen? The FEMA meeting?
I, I will send it to them.
Yeah, and, and I don't know what my schedule is.
That actually just came in yesterday, I think so.
Yeah, let's just make sure.
Yeah, that and actually make sure Peter got it, because he's the FEMA coordinator as well. Were they looking for a participant from the select board or is it just more for informational for the towns to offer to send somebody?
Information, I think.
Just, just an informational meeting. It got, it went to quite a few in the town. Yeah, Jeff.
Did it go to Diane and Peter?
Yes, Jeff Taylor got one, Sharon, Peter, Peter got one, Cindy.
Okay, great. So they all got it.
Good, good.
Everybody got one. Okay, the next one is from chatter and it's about some increases in service. Spectrum TV Select will increase by seven, seven dollars and fifty cents. Spectrum TV Silver will increase by seven dollars and fifty cents and Spectrum TV Gold will increase by seven dollars and fifty cents. And now, this is another one. We received this from, I saw this the, the other day.
That's a request from a student.
Yeah, it's a request from, from a student. He's in the 2019 Division One Young Marine Unit of the Year. And his name is Aaron Zalaski. He's sixteen and he's a junior at the Batlet High School in Webster. And he would like us to get involved with Red Ribbon Week. Will take place October 23rd through 31st. The Natahog River Young Marines will be actively participating in this nationally recognized drug awareness event. You can assist us in publicizing and promoting the week by issuing a town-wide proclamation that boldly declares your town's support and commitment to the fight against illegal drugs and those that use. So we have to probably take a vote on that.
Vote to support his efforts.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there any action required on our part?
They're asking us to publicize and follow them.
Just the public. But then, yeah, there is something here. It's called proclamation and it has to be signed. Yes, I can sign it and then, then probably down here, he says your town is Connecticut. We'll have to put Brookfield instead. Okay, that's all that we have. Do you have anything else?
Yep, I'm motion to adjourn.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have a quick question. About three weeks ago, we had a dead tree fall on Allen Road cause some property damage. And the highway superintendent came out the very next day and cut the other half of the tree down because it was also dangerous. About a week later, we had another one on Allen Road that came down, fell parallel to Allen Road. Pretty significant sized tree, but it didn't do any property damage. I stopped today to talk with Ryan to ask him if he has heard anything from National Grid on when they may be coming out to take care of the dead trees. I had also asked him this about six months ago and he said he was waiting to hear. Basically today, he told me that they're not even returning his phone calls. He can't even get through. He's mentioned that there are sixty-five dangerous dead trees on Allen Road alone. We've had two of them fall down in the last three weeks. I don't know if there is any help that you can give Ryan, or if you have a number, or if you can reach out to Angobi or somebody. Once we get some snow on these trees, and these are basically all the result of, you know, the gypsy moth infestation.
I get twenty-one on my property alone.
Yep, and.
And I, I get to pay the bill.
Yep, and we've got, we, the people on lane 21 approached a tree company this week. We probably have forty trees to take down. And that's not, that's, two, two of them have already been flagged by National Grid. But again, I've tried to call them and all I do is get on their, you know, there'll be a fifteen-minute wait. So I don't know if there's another number, or if you can look into it, or if there's anything you can do.
Isn't there a lady that lives here in town on Long Hill Road?
Can you send me that number, because I can sit there on my commute in the morning and get through.
I get it off my bill. It's the phone number on the bill and it just, you know, there's a fifteen-minute wait and then it, they just never come back. So Ryan said that he has the name of the woman who was in charge of oborus for National Grid. Now, I don't know whether you can reach out to her or whether somebody else could.
We have a woman that lives on Long Hill Road that we have contacted before with other things that we've needed.
The double poles.
The double poles. And so Karen said that she can try to call her and see if she can get any response out of it.
Don't even know if she's still works for National Grid, but we do have her number, so I'll definitely give her a call.
Okay.
Maybe she can help us out and tell us who to get in touch with.
Well, they also have, what's the fellow's name that was on the solar committee? He worked for National Grid.
Tim Rowan.
Tim.
Tim Rowan.
Rowan, yeah, he might be able to help. And, and I mentioned Allen Road only because I talked with Ryan about it this morning and I'm sure.
Yeah, and his list is, a, a big chunk of his list is Allen Road. I mean, there is more other places in town.
Oh, absolutely.
Right? But, but a big population of the trees right now is concentrated there.
Okay, just anything.
And the wind blew up the hill and I've got the twenty-one at the top of there.
Yeah, there you go.
Unfortunately.
So I don't know if you can help him or out at all. It would be appreciated. Thanks.
Ken, did you have something?
Mr. Jones and I foiled a plea yesterday for another solar farm on Route 148, so I was consulting.
Hey, could you come up?
Yeah, come up.
Mr. Al Jones, in the office, yeah. A fellow came from Maynard. He and his partner wanted to buy the lots up on Route 148, the six lots that have been there for eight years, and he wanted to put a solar farm in. So we kind of told him, oh, it's all, it's wet. How much would it cost? Just go back to Maynard. Can't do it there. He was, he was going after his application. I says, well, as far as I know, I think we still have a moratorium on solar farms?
No, we don't. No, so at the last town meeting, we voted in our solar bylaw and all of the, all of the specifics surrounding solar installations are, are very strictly delineated within the, the town bylaw. So we do not currently have a moratorium.
Now, except property on 148, there's maybe only one house down there. It's on the left?
No, the, the, the six lots that are just before Colette's house.
Oh, okay.
On the right-hand side with the little stream coming down along it.
Okay.
And he had, he had plans of taking, digging the wetland out, running the pipe along the road. I goes, that's ain't gonna work.
Good news.
It's, that's the second one. So they're coming here and, oh, I noticed on my Google map that you have a lot of big spaces. Well, they're not for sale right now, so go back to Maynard.
Good. Thank you Kenny.
So we are all set. Steve, were you here with anything?
Nothing, just here to observe. Thank you.
Good. So with that, I would motion to adjourn.
I will second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Out of town.